Welcome to another installment of OUSD N1. The Orange Unified School District is proud to recognize the Orange Police Department with the Community Partner Recognition Award for their outstanding contributions to our schools and students. Through their involvement in school events, safety programs, and educational initiatives, the Orange Police Department plays a vital role in fostering a safe and supportive learning environment. Officers regularly engage with students, building meaningful relationships that promote trust, security, and a strong sense of community. We greatly appreciate our partnership with the Orange Police Department and their dedication and service to our Orange Unified community. Welcome to another installment of OUSD N1. The Orange Unified School District is proud to recognize the Orange Police Department with the Community Partner Recognition Award for their outstanding contributions to our schools and students. Through their involvement in school events, safety programs, and educational initiatives, the Orange Police Department plays a vital role in fostering a safe and supportive learning environment. Officers regularly engage with students, building meaningful relationships that promote trust, security, and a strong sense of community. We greatly appreciate our partnership with the Orange Police Department and their dedication and service to our Orange Unified community.
I call the opening session of the May 7th Board Meeting to order at 5 o'clock. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, we have a quorum.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on closed session items?
No, we don't.
All right. Adjourn to closed session at 5 o'clock.
Welcome to another installment of OUSD N1. The Orange Unified School District is proud to recognize the Orange Police Department with the Community Partner Recognition Award for their outstanding contributions to our schools and students. Through their involvement in school events, safety programs, and educational initiatives, the Orange Police Department plays a vital role in fostering a safe and supportive learning environment. Officers regularly engage with students, building meaningful relationships that promote trust, security, and a strong sense of community. We greatly appreciate our partnership with the Orange Police Department and their dedication and service to our Orange Unified community.
Thank you for joining us today.
at the end of the year, but also the coursework that you do in class, which are those internal assessments. So it definitely gives a more holistic approach to learning. Additionally, you can, while AP is usually focused on fast-paced cramming information to study for a test, IB really allows you to dive deep into topics of your choice, which I think is really cool. And you also, if you don't do as well in a class such as Biology, you could score better in classes like English or History to still get your diploma, because all the tests are weighted the same. Another big pro of doing IB is the college credit. You can enter college with sophomore standing if you score 30 points on all your assessments combined, which saves a lot of time and a lot of money. And lastly, I think the freedom is a really big benefit of the IB, because, again, like I've mentioned before, you get to take tests and do projects and research on topics that really interest you, which makes it more personalized for your education. With the IB program at Canyon expanding so rapidly, we have implemented an IB Student Council, which is a group of students who lead and communicate with their peers to make the program more connected and exciting. We also have the Bigs and Littles Program, which is where juniors are assigned a senior mentor, and they can just bond together and get advice over the same things that they're going through. And I think it's really cool, because you can make friendships across grade levels, which otherwise would not have been there. This year, our IB Coordinator, Mrs. Vargas, has begun the process of developing a newsletter in which parents in the community can learn more about what is going on with IB. These are some excerpts of previous issues that our IB Council put together during the first semester, showcasing some accomplishments and different projects that we do. And lastly, every year, our IB program undertakes the responsibility of putting together our Annual International Week, usually in April, where we celebrate the diversity around campus through music.
I'll do it a second time to give everybody a chance to sit down. I call the regular session of the May 7th Board Meeting to order at 7:07 PM. If everybody could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to God, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, report of closed session, Mr. Christensen, do we have any reports?
Thank you, President Erickson. Yes, we do. The Board of Education voted 6-0-1 with Trustee Thomas absent to approve a partial claims resolution agreement with ISIC, Inc. in the amount of $12,589 in case number 30202201279989. This amount is to be issued in a joint check to ISIC, Inc. and Angeles Contractors, Inc. That concludes the report of closed session.
Thank you. All right, and Trustee Thomas is sick tonight, he sends his regrets. Item D, adoption of the agenda, staff has asked to pull item 11W. With the exception of 11W, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Trustee Yamazaki, do I have a second?
One second.
Trustee Glass, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion 6-0-1. All right, item 4A, we're excited to welcome Sahar Tamara for Canyon High School Spotlight.
Okay. Good evening, President Erickson, Superintendent Christensen, members of the Board Cabinet and Community. My name is Sahar Tamara, and I'm the student Board Representative for Canyon High School. Canyon is an absolutely amazing environment that much of the student body and I are lucky to call home. I could probably bring in 2,000 people to tell you about the endless opportunities we have and how amazing it is, but we would have to be here for a while. So instead, I have decided to focus on one program we have that is unique to only Canyon out of the five Orange Unified High Schools. And that is our International Baccalaureate Program, also known as IB. You might be wondering, what is IB? IB is an advanced program that is tailored for students who are curious in better understanding the world around them from multiple perspectives. It aims to create well-rounded students who are involved in their communities while preparing them for college. Statistically, IB students have the highest success rates in universities around the world because of the program's focus on knowledge application to real-life scenarios. To get an IB diploma, students have to complete three standard-level classes, which include math, environmental science, Spanish, and more, along with three higher-level classes such as English, biology, or history of the Americas. The difference is that standard-level classes are one year long, while higher-level classes have testing after two years of coursework. Students also have to engage in CAS, which stands for Creativity, Activity, and Service. This includes involvement with the arts, so you could go to a play or play an instrument. You also have to record hours of physical activity, which could be playing a sport, taking a hike, or anything like that, and volunteer for the community. The picture on the left shows three current IB seniors who engaged in CAS by going to a Greek festival. Every student must also take Theory of Knowledge, which is a class that Canyon holds before zero period. As an IB student myself, this was probably my favorite part of the program, not because of the early hours, but because it allowed me to think deeper about why and how we know what we know, and be able to apply that to what we're learning in the classroom. And I also really like the discussion-based classroom setting, because it's not just assignment after assignment. Lastly, students get to complete research projects on topics of their choice through personal, or through in-class internal assessments, and the year-long 4,000-word extended essay, which wraps up the IB diploma program. This is a really cool project, because you get to work with one teacher of your choice on a topic that interests you for about a year. And it's really fulfilling, and despite all the hard work, it's a cool experience. To be able to make connections and dive deeper into your interests. Something really exciting is the growth that has been happening with our IB program in the past few years, which is why I kind of wanted to focus on that for my presentation tonight. In 2024, we had four students who participated and graduated with their diploma. My class had 16, who are also expected to get their diploma. And for the class of 2026 and 27, we should have around 25 students who are in the IB program. Some benefits of being part of IB are the assessments, which are combined with an exam at the end of the year, but also the coursework that you do in class, which are those internal assessments. So it definitely gives a more holistic approach to learning. Additionally, you can, while AP is usually focused on fast-paced cramming information to study for a test, IB really allows you to dive deep into topics of your choice, which I think is really cool. And the, you also, if you don't do as well in a class such as biology, you could score better in classes like English or History to still get your diploma, because all the tests are weighted the same. Another big pro of doing IB is the college credit. You can enter college with sophomore standing if you score 30 points on all your assessments combined, which saves a lot of time and a lot of money. And lastly, I think the freedom is a really big benefit of IB, because again, like I've mentioned before, you get to take tests and do projects and research on topics that really interest you, which makes it more personalized for your education. With the IB program at Canyon expanding so rapidly, we have implemented an IB Student Council, which is a group of students who lead and communicate with their peers to make the program more connected and exciting. We also have the Bigs and Littles Program, which is where juniors are assigned a senior mentor, and they can just bond together and get advice over the same things that they're going through. And I think it's really cool, because you can make friendships across grade levels, which otherwise would not have been there. This year, our IB Coordinator, Mrs. Vargas, has begun the process of developing a newsletter in which parents in the community can learn more about what is going on with IB. These are some excerpts of previous issues that our IB Council put together during the first semester, showcasing some accomplishments and different projects that we do. And lastly, every year, our IB program undertakes the responsibility of putting together our annual International Week, usually in April, where we celebrate the diversity around campus through music, food, cultural activities, and more. To end the presentation, I would like to play a quick video showcasing our IB seniors and their experiences.
I chose to do the IB diploma program, because it would challenge me academically and help me deepen my knowledge across various subjects.
I joined the IB program because my mom had heard about it from a very young age. I went to a bilingual immersion school for elementary and middle school. So when I was choosing high schools, I wanted, I knew I wanted to do something with the IB program, and that's how I landed on Canyon. Now that I'm looking at colleges, I want to go to an international school, so the IB program really helps with that.
I chose IB for two reasons. One, because I really wanted my application to stand out one of these colleges. But two, because IB aspires to have all the students have a holistic education, and I really aspire to broaden my perspective from throughout schools.
My favorite IB class definitely has to be Theory of Knowledge. It's a class that has challenged my own beliefs and has made me more open-minded and has brought in my, brought in my way of thinking, and it's definitely brought me closer to my peers.
My favorite IB class is Biology, because we get to run experiments that align with our interests and impact the world.
My favorite IB class on campus is IB History of the Americas with Mr. Collin. The reason I like this class is because we do a lot of group projects, and there's a lot of open discussion, which I think lets me think in a more broader aspect. I also enjoy the collaboration.
The IB program has definitely helped me become a more worldly person, because instead of AP classes where it kind of teaches you how to take a test, that's what I always say, that's how AP classes felt to me before junior year. And then I get into IB classes, and it feels like they're actually teaching me kind of interdisciplinary materials. And it's definitely helped me to be so much more well-rounded at the end of my high school.
Some ways IB has helped me grow is being more culturally aware with the resources that we use to analyze and critically use our critical thinking skills. And so being more aware is like one of the most impactful things.
The IB program has helped me challenge myself more. For example, growing up, I wasn't really good at writing or doing well in my English classes. And now that I've reached the end of my IB pathway or my IB program, I feel like I'm a stronger writer, and I'm able to write the IB 4,000-word extended essay. The IB English classes here have taught me to put my ideas into words more easily.
We've all had the chance to get really close to each other, and I probably would not have met or talked to these other students before. So it's so fun to have like so many close friends in the IB program. It really helps to make it a good learning environment.
One thing I like about the IB is the opportunities it gives me to educationally challenge myself, like with my Biology IA on seed germination.
My favorite thing about the IB program is that it's very structured. The reason I like this is because it makes me set deadlines for my work, and I learn better time management from this.
So my favorite thing about IB is the amount of friends that I've made throughout my IB journey, and all the teachers in IB are super supportive and helpful.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to tell you about our IB program here at Canyon. If you guys have any questions, please let me know, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. I have. I have one question, Ms. Tamara, do you want to share with us where you're, where you decided to go next year?
Sure, I'm going to UCLA for.
It sounds like you're going to be well-prepared after being in the IB program.
Yes, I'm very excited.
Thank you. Thank you so much for sharing.
Of course.
All right, item 4B, Superintendent's Report. Oh, sorry. Yes, pictures, I'm sorry. Canyon students, can you come forward, we'll take some pictures of you?
Ready, one, two, your little trustee hats on. Okay, okay, thank you.
I'll let them. Good evening. For my report this evening, I just want to say that as we start to wind down the school year, it becomes a time when we get to acknowledge all of our wonderful employees and organizations that support the school district. And this evening, we're going to acknowledge nutrition service workers, school nurses, teachers, our relationship with the Orange Police Department and their new chief, Adam Jevick, who is here, our Employees of the Month. But I'm most excited about an appointment that we're going to, is going to take place shortly, and that's of Dr. Rachel Moneris as the next Superintendent of OUSD. It's been 17 years since we hired a Superintendent from outside the district. The last was Renee Dreyer in 2008. And just like she brought lots of new ideas, different experience to the benefit of the district, I know the same thing is going to happen with Dr. Moneris. And so I'm just very excited this evening. It's really a milestone for the district to, to reach out and get somebody of this caliber. And I'm just, I'm so excited to see what happens in the future as we move forward. So anyway, that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, President's Report. First, I want to welcome our littlest member of the OUSD family, Lily May, the little cutie in the back, and here she is. Sporting her Orange Unified clothes that she just got, just for being born, how exciting. So she's adorable. Thank you for bringing her, she's two and a half months? Four months? Oh my gosh, okay, four months. She's a little peanut, but thank you. Second, I want to acknowledge, I want to acknowledge a one-year boardiversary for Trustees Pelly and Glass. They reminded me this week. I was going to bring you little pins that said "I'm one", but then I figured in board years, it was more like 10, so it didn't really work. But anyway, I was going to give a report on all the visitations and things that I've gone to, because generally, as a Board President, I've been giving different kinds of reports and not been reporting on that. However, at the last meeting, I provided an update on the Superintendent's search process, and I still got some questions, and so I decided I would go ahead and dedicate my, I'll repeat what I said last month and kind of give you a little bit more of an update on the process itself. So as Superintendent Christensen said, this is a pivotal step towards and forward for the Orange Unified School District with the approval of Dr. Moneris's contract tonight. So I want to recap again the process we went through. It really was a collaborative and productive process. It began with building a profile, and that was based on what the Board was looking for, but it was also built on thousands of voices. Staff, parents, community members, who shared a vision for leadership by way of listening sessions and surveys. The person that we were looking for was someone who had extensive experience in California public education, preferably as a Superintendent or Cabinet level, someone with a proven record of success, someone who would be committed to building trust, listening to you, and would appreciate our diverse community and diverse points of view. Someone who was able to truly lead with courage, integrity, and most of all, an unwavering commitment to educating and caring for all Orange Unified students. Our recruitment yielded an impressive 24 applicants, most with impeccable credentials, and many sitting as Superintendents, and nearly all with high-level leadership experience. It was really difficult to narrow down that pool, because they were just so talented. But we did, we interviewed five finalists, each of whom were highly qualified, and any of whom would have been great leaders for Orange Unified. But Dr. Moneris, our ultimate choice, really stood out as an absolutely perfect fit. First, she's laser-focused on students, student achievement, and the whole school experience. Her experience, intelligence, and her impressive academic achievement stood out, as did her entire body of work in public education. Her commitment to a leadership style that emphasizes continuous learning, support for educators and students, innovation and accountability, all the recommendations that came with her, and her commitment to transparent communication and trust-building, and just her demeanor during our conversation and interviews, all led us to a choice of Dr. Moneris as the next Superintendent. And it wasn't, wasn't close. We all came to a unanimous decision on it. Tonight is about putting all of those hours of really hard work that we spent trying to choose the right person into action by choosing this leader who has vast experience in all types of districts, small, medium, large. And she's got 31 years of public education experience as a classroom teacher, a principal, assistant superintendent, a deputy superintendent, a superintendent. She worked her way up, and along the way, she gathered a diverse set of skills along the way. I know you're going to hear more about her when we have this item up on the agenda, so I won't go into too many more details, but I just wanted to share the process with you and remind you of how intensive it was. And thank you to all the people who participated in the process. So thank you. Now, we will go to Board Proclamation, School Lunch Hero Day, May 2nd, 2025, Trustee Yamazaki and Nutrition Services.
I get the honor of doing this. The Board of Education will officially proclaim May 2nd, 2025, as School Lunch Hero Day in Orange Unified School District. School Lunch Hero Day is held annually on the first Friday in May to honor the dedicated individuals responsible for providing nutritious meals to millions of students as children across America. This special day gives us the opportunity to recognize the hard work, commitment, and care of the staff, members, and our Nutrition Services Department, who go above and beyond each day to ensure that our students are well-nourished and ready to learn. Their efforts are an integral part of the success of our students and the overall well-being of our school community. The district is pleased to participate in this observance and welcomes the opportunity to officially recognize and commend the district's School Lunch Heroes for their continued excellent service to our students. Further, the Board encourages students, parents, staff, and community members to participate in events and activities to honor our school nutrition employees who play a vital role in creating a positive and healthy environment for all students. Jamie Sanchez, our Director of Nutrition Services, here's a proclamation.
Thank you.
And I think you have a few words to say.
Thank you, everyone. Yes, I have a few words. So first, I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees, Acting Superintendent Christensen, and the Cabinet for recognizing and honoring our hard-working staff. They work really hard every single day. We have a team of 110 plus or minus, we're always recruiting new workers, who feed our kids every single day. And many of them even actually work during the summer to support our summer enrichment programs. Last year, OUSD nutrition staff served 1.1 million breakfasts, 1.7 million lunches, and 200,000 after-school snacks and supper. So add it all up, that's about 3 million meals just last year alone. I'd also like to give a big shout-out to my leadership team that is here with me tonight. First and foremost, Ramon Ornellis and Selena Zendejas, they're our operations supervisors, who make sure that the kitchens run seamlessly and are staffed and the day-to-day operations. We couldn't do it without your support and leadership and guidance for all of our team. And then Christina Nguyen, who is Orange Unified's first nutrition specialist and registered dietitian menu planner, who has been working tirelessly this past year, next week will be one year, for her to bring on more freshly-prepared menu items and recipes, and the job is still working. So thank you all, and thank you for shining a light on our School Lunch Heroes. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have a Board Proclamation, School Nurse Day, May 7th. If we could get Trustee Vane and Roberto Angel and our school nurses, that'd be wonderful.
Today, Wednesday, May 7th, we join the nation in celebrating National School Nurse Day. This day is dedicated to recognizing the incredible work that our school nurses do every day to support the health and well-being of our students and staff. School nurses are truly the heart of a safe and healthy school environment. Their dedication goes beyond providing care. They play a crucial role in helping students succeed, both academically and socially, by addressing health needs that might otherwise hinder their learning. National School Nurse Day is an opportunity to formally acknowledge the vital role our school nurses play in managing complex health conditions, educating students about healthy practices, and ensuring that every student has access to the health services they need to succeed. On behalf of the Board of Education, I encourage all students, parents, staff, and community members to take part in this celebration, to show our appreciation for our school nurses, and to join in recognizing their invaluable contributions to our school community. And here to welcome them is Roberto Angel.
Thank you, Dr. Vane. Good evening, Madam President Erickson, esteemed Board members, Executive Cabinet, and members of our community. I'm honored this evening to take a moment to recognize the outstanding work of our district's school nurses. These dedicated professionals and vital members of our student support team and their contributions to student health and wellness deserve our recognition, not just today, but every day. This year, we proudly honor Dana Luciani as a 2025 OUSD School Nurse of the Year, a recognition strongly supported by her peers. Since joining OUSD in 2014, Dana has served multiple school communities with professionalism and compassion, and currently supports Villa Park High School. Originally from Las Vegas, Dana holds a BSN from UNLV and a master's in nursing from Sacramento State. Dana is known not only for her clinical expertise, but also for her calm presence and demeanor for student wellness. As Dana shares, "My fellow school nurses inspire me daily with their compassion, resilience, and commitment to their profession." Congratulations, Dana. I also would like to recognize Linda Hasi for her great service to our district. As a longtime school nurse and our lead nurse, Linda has been an advocate for student health and a trusted mentor for her colleagues. As she prepares for retirement, we thank her for her leadership and wish her a joyful next chapter filled with knitting, family, and a well-deserved relaxation. Congratulations, Dana and Linda, and thank you to our school nurses for their dedication to health and success of all our students. Thank you.
Linda, would you like to say anything?
Linda, would you like to say anything?
I just want to make you happy. We have an amazing group of nurses. I know they can do wonderful things.
Why don't we take the picture and we'll have you say that into the microphone?
I just want to just let you know, we have an amazing group of nurses. And though we're still not quite sure who's going to take over, I'm sure there'll be fabulous support from everybody moving forward. And thank you so much, Eddie. It's been just wonderful working with you.
Thank you. Now, if we could have the teachers come up for a Board Proclamation, California Day of the Teacher, May 14th, 2025. Do I get to hold her again? Yay, so excited. All right, welcome, welcome. The Board of Education will officially proclaim May 14th as California Day of the Teacher to honor the invaluable contributions of teachers in Orange Unified. Each year, school districts across California take this opportunity to recognize the dedication, service, and lasting impact of their educators. This year marks the 43rd anniversary of this special observance, which was established to celebrate the essential role teachers play in shaping the lives and futures of California's children. The proclamation honors the dedication of more than 1,150 teachers in Orange Unified School District and commends their tireless efforts to foster creativity, innovation, and academic excellence in our classrooms. The Board of Education encourages all citizens to observe this important day by taking time to recognize and appreciate those who share the gift of knowledge and inspire the next generation through teaching. We also invite students, parents, staff, and community members to participate in events and activities that celebrate the teachers who make a difference every day in the lives of our students. Thank you. I'd like to see if Karen Barone would like to say something?
I do, I would. Do you ever know not to say something?
Yeah. Never.
Just a little, something. Good evening, esteemed members of the school board, Board President Erickson, Superintendent Christensen, district leadership, dedicated educators, and community members, and that is a mouthful. First and foremost, thank you. Thank you for this proclamation, for the Day of the Teacher. We appreciate you recognizing the incredible work of our teachers and staff and what we do every single day. And thank you for your continued support of public education, our amazing students, and of course, us, the slightly caffeinated multitasking superheroes you call teachers. We promise we only use our powers for good, mostly. Tonight, we honor all our educators from our, I need to, I'm going to make sure I address and talk about all our OUAA members, because whether they're classroom teachers or not, they do teach our students every day. So from our incredible speech pathologists who help find every student's voice, to our nurses who are the masters of both boo-boos and teenage angst, let's hear it for our psychologists who navigate the complexities of young minds, our innovative CTE teachers shaping future careers, our brilliant VAPA teachers who unlock creativity and fill our schools with music and art, our dedicated special education teachers who perform miracles daily, and of course, our classroom teachers who somehow manage to teach calculus history and the importance of not eating glue, sometimes all before lunch. Your dedication, especially through challenges that seem to multiply faster than unsupervised kindergartners, is truly awe-inspiring. This spirit of dedication extends to the crucial collaboration we see between our union and all of you district leadership. We may not always agree on which new educational acronym will save the world this year, but we are united by a far more important common goal, educating our students and preparing them for bright futures. This partnership is vital. We see its strength in the critical work being done by our joint committees, the School Consolidation Committee bravely navigating complex decisions, the 7-Eleven Committee, not as some students hope, dedicated to slurpees, but to essential facilities discussions, and our Communications Committee working to keep everyone informed. These and others are testaments to the fact that when we work together, union, parents, and district leadership, we create the best possible environment for our schools to thrive. I'm almost done. Speaking of new beginnings and continued progress, I want to acknowledge the hiring of our new superintendent. My initial conversations with her have been incredibly positive and fruitful, and I'm inspired by her experience and optimistic about the fresh perspective she brings. I look forward to a strong collaborative relationship as we continue to move our district forward. We know there's important work to be done, budgets to balance, and initiatives to launch. And it's a good thing educators are fueled by challenges, and let's be honest, more coffee. And on a personal note, I just want to send a huge thank you to all my OUAA members since taking on this presidential gig at the end of December. It's been a bit like juggling flaming torches while supervising hands-on science experiments, exhilarating and slightly terrifying, but your support has been incredible. I can't name everyone who's stepped up and taken on more leadership, but you all know who you are, and you're the reason I haven't accidentally set off the school fire alarm, yet. I wouldn't change a thing because of the amazing people I get to work alongside. So, thank you, President Erickson, all the school board members, especially coming to our sites and supporting all of the work we're doing. And let's continue to work together, support each other, and maybe even share a laugh or two along the way, because what we do matters. Thank you. Get that baby right in front.
Okay, on to item 4G, Community Partnership Recognition of the Orange Police Department. And Deputy Superintendent Ernie Gonzalez will be presenting with Alberto Angel.
Thank you, Mr. Angel. You can take it away.
Good evening once again, Madam President Erickson, esteemed Board members, Executive Cabinet, and members of our community. In celebration of community collaboration, the Orange Police Department was awarded the Esteemed Community Partner Recognition Award by our district on March 19th, 2025. This award recognizes their incredible contributions to our students and community. The Orange Police Department is commended for its many contributions to school activities and programs. The department has influenced students' lives by participating in events, safety programs, and educational initiatives. Their officers have worked to build relationships with students, staff, families, promoting a sense of security and support important for their success. We greatly appreciate our partnership with the Orange Police Department and its positive impact on our school community. Their dedication to the safety and well-being of our students is incredible, and we extend our sincere gratitude for their ongoing support and outstanding service. Thank you.
And here's Chief Javik.
Well, good evening. It's a, thank you. It's an honor to receive this recognition on behalf of the men and women of the Orange Police Department, who not only serve our Orange community, but also our Orange Unified School District. We have exceptional people who do the extraordinary, and many of you witness their hard work on a daily basis. Not only am I a proud graduate of Orange High School, but but when I, but when I look around this room, I am proud of the relationships I have with many of you as a result of our partnerships, that the, our partnership that the department has with our schools. So, we appreciate this partnership, and we look forward to the many years that we have that we're going to work together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have Board Recognition. You've Got the Edge Employee of the Month, Ms. Nim.
Absolutely. Good evening, President Erickson, members of the board, Superintendent Christensen, Cabinet, and the community. We are excited to celebrate our 2024-2025 You've Got the Edge Employees of the Month for the last quarter of the school year. Can't believe we're already there. Two employees are chosen each month who exemplify one or more of the district's core values. They are awarded with a customized OUSD Tumblr, gift cards from Schools First Federal Credit Union, and the Orange Unified Public Schools Foundation, and a Framed Employee of the Month certificate, lanyard, and pin. Additionally, their portraits are displayed in the external display case outside the boardrooms. We have video this evening to highlight each of our honorees.
As a district, we are fortunate to work with an amazing team of professionals, and I'm proud to congratulate our You've Got the Edge Employees of the Month for March and April. You are our marked Employee of the Month. Congratulations.
Ms. Becky, as you know, we couldn't be here without you. Our kids are so lucky to have you. We are so lucky to have you. Not only do you serve as kids in your office, in the classroom, on the campus. If there's a crying kid, you are everywhere. So, thank you so much.
I just wanted to say thank you so much to Mrs. Tippett, my amazing principal, and to the district as a whole, and to Canyon Rim. Like, I adore working here. It is a dream job. I always tell everyone, I was like, I will retire here if you will let me. The kids are amazing. Like, I feel so thankful to get to come every day, and like, this is my job. It's wonderful, and I'm just so grateful to be here.
Congratulations. You have been nominated and selected by the committee as the Classified Employee of the Month. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
It wasn't just one person. You touched some of our departments, some of our divisions, some of our schools. So, across the district, people really wanted to see you recognized. So, we're just excited to be able to be the ones to do it.
Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate this award. It's very odd being on this side of the camera, but it's been a true pleasure to work here at Orange Unified. Really enjoy my team and our leadership, and all of HR has been so good to me, as has the whole district. So, couldn't be more proud to be here and really, really enjoy myself and working here. It's been a lot of fun, so thank you.
You were selected as the Classified Employee of the Month. Congratulations.
Our most vulnerable population, you're always willing to help serve, and you're there to help motivate, and our students need that, and our students are thankful for that. And it may not all be perfect all the time with rainbows and unicorns, but we're very thankful for you, and you give and serve this school with pride, and we're so glad that you're a panther with us.
I just want to say thank you so much for this recognition. I want to thank Ms. Cheryl Glass on being there to be supportive at Orange High School. She's my number one go-to. It's finally the day that I've been recognized to be that supportive person on campus, and it's more than I can ask for. I appreciate it. Thank you so much, guys.
You are the Employee of the Month. Congratulations.
Not only is Ms. Rivera our Spanish dual-emergent teacher, so she's flexible. When I say I have a parent to her, she quickly changes and makes sure that she's always ready for me. If you ask all of these friends behind you, we would all say that she's the best teacher, right? The best.
Thank you, Dr. B, for all of your support and help in the classroom. I appreciate working in a Title I community to support all of our students learning English and Spanish. Thank you so much for this honor.
Congratulations again to our Employees of the Month. We are so thankful for your dedication and powerful commitment to the students of the Orange Unified School District.
Congratulations to all of our employees. And Kevin Sullivan, you look good on the other side of the camera. So, you know, you should keep it up. Next, we have Student Board Member Reports. Mr. Tran, do you want to start us off?
Absolutely. Well, to initiate my Student Board Member Report, I'd like to, of course, thank the Board of Education and the OUSD community for giving me this opportunity to come up here and speak. First and foremost, as some of you may know, as parents especially, AP exams are this week and next week. So sincerely, I really do wish everyone, and I do hope that you wish me as well, the best of luck in my AP exams. We also have our Prom Court just released. For our juniors and senior classes, they have the opportunity to nominate their own classmates for the Prom, for the Prom Court. Included in our Prom Court is Lonnie Hopkins, Kat Thai, Katherine Yontani, Kiki Lieberman, Alina Trung, and for our gentlemen, David Arguello, Tristan and Queest, Martin Oak, Christian Stern, and Zudan Hussain. Prom is May 31st at the Richard Nixon Library, and I hope to see you guys there. For, I'd just also like to let everyone know, Spider Lab is open for business. If you are looking to do custom apparel, wall graphics, stickers, floral graphics, outdoor banners, or signage, feel free to contact Mr. Larios at the Spider Lab, and you can find his email on Villa Park High School's website. Also, in accordance with Villa Park High School tradition, each and every single year, we have our annual dodgeball tournament, which includes around a dozen teams, and also a team for teachers as well, right? And so, we're expecting to conclude the tournament by the end of the week. It's a fun opportunity to see students, and especially our sports teams, compete against each other. And due to the temporary closure of the gym, our dodgeball tournament is currently being hosted in the grass fields right next to the softball and baseball fields. And lastly, oh, I'm sorry, not lastly. I'd like to congratulate Villa Park High School's tennis team for winning their North League Hill Championship. That was a very big win for us. For us, my apologies. I had a kind of conflict of interest, but, and I do believe it'd be remiss for me not to recognize Ms. Dana Luciani as School Nurse, OUSD Nurse of the Year. I believe Ms. Luciani has made massive contributions since arriving to Villa Park High School and really serves as a fundamental faculty member to Villa Park High School students and other faculty members alike. And on a personal note, I do like to recognize that on April 30th, and then this is kind of, it's personal to me, and it's personal to hundreds of thousands of Vietnamese-Americans, not just here in Orange County, but millions of Vietnamese-Americans across this country. On April 30th marks the 50th year anniversary of the fall of Saigon. Around, give or take, around 6 million Vietnamese fled their homeland in search of new opportunities and in search of freedom, many of whom coming here to the United States. And a give or take, around 500,000 to 600,000 Vietnamese who left in pursuit of freedom unfortunately perished at sea. And so, for, as a Vietnamese-American myself, the hardship, the hardship, the struggle and the pursuit of freedom is personal to me and to hundreds of thousands, hundreds of thousands of Vietnamese-Americans who happen to congregate in our Orange County. And also, a little fun fact, Orange Unified does happen to represent a sliver of Garden Grove, which composes one of the largest Vietnamese-American populations in the nation. And the Vietnamese-American community here in Orange County has made massive strides. Just earlier today, I was at a symposium at UCI commemorating the fall of Saigon and the strides that the Vietnamese-American community has made here in the county of Orange. You know, Orange Unified happens to represent a significant Vietnamese-American population. At my high school, we have a massive Vietnamese Student Association. And here in the county of Orange, at the Department of Education, Dr. Stefan Bean is the first, the first Vietnamese-American superintendent for the County Department of Schools in Orange County. And so, again, just April 30th, almost 50 years. 50 years of hardship, 50 years of striving for opportunity, and 50 years in pursuit for freedom and democracy here in the United States. So, thank you, and thank you so much, everyone, including the OUSD board and the OUSD community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tran. Thank you for acknowledging that and teaching us something. We appreciate it. Sahar, would you like to give a report?
Sure. Good evening, everyone, once again. Tonight, I would like to highlight our Dance Company's Spring Show and ASB's Mental Health View Matter Week. So, at the end of April, So, at the end of April, our Dance Company and Junior Dance Company put on their annual Spring Show, where they perform for students, teachers, and their families after school for three days. I have watched it every year, and they never disappoint. It's truly amazing to see all their hard work and artistic talent showcased in this one-of-a-kind performance. The student body always looks forward to this show, and this year, the trend continued with the seats of the multipurpose room being packed from opening night to closing night. So, there was a lot of energy, which you could feel, and you could also feel the love that they put into every choreography, and I highly recommend watching it next year if you have the time. Additionally, last week, we held a Spirit Week for Mental Health Awareness called You Matter Week. The first project ASB completed was writing an individual personalized message about every single student in the school on little paper hearts. On Monday, we taped these hearts to a wall displayed in the quad so that everyone could look for and grab their uplifting message and feel recognized and a central part of the school community. On Tuesday, we had a table where everyone could make friendship bracelets, and on Wednesday, we had a table where students could get glitter tattoos as little fun activities. Finally, on Thursday, we wrapped up the event by partnering with the cafeteria to hand out ice cream sandwiches to everyone during lunch. And in addition to these events, we had some of the students' favorite teachers, and even our principal, Mr. McKee, participate in the Mental Health Awareness Ice Bucket Challenge that has been going around social media. I don't know if you guys have seen that. But this was a really cool way for the adults on campus to share a quick message about the importance of mental health and connect with their students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Item 5A, Approval of the Minutes. Do I have a motion? All right, Trustee Pelley, do I have a second? Trustee Vane, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes 601. Next item, 6A, Public Comment. Madam Clerk, are there any public comments?
Yes, we have four for 7A and many non-agenda, so they all get three minutes each.
Okay. All right. As has been our practice, we will take public comment after the item is presented. And in this case, Item 7A is actually being presented to you by the Board of Education. So, we are going to go ahead and start our presentation first, and then we'll take public comment, and then we will take the vote, if that is acceptable. So, would anybody like to go first in discussing why you would approve of, approve or not approve, I suppose, of the Contract of Employment for Superintendent of Schools? All right, Trustee Pelley?
Thank you. I won't take too much time. I think a lot of things have already been said. But I just wanted to add a couple things. So, as an educator, you know, one thing I am always looking for is just prior experience, obviously. Looking at the resume for Dr. Monades, she had a really wide range of experience, starting with elementary school, which of course is my, you know, my wheelhouse, but I think that's really important to have a wide range. I know she worked all the way through up, she threw, all the way up throughout different districts. We talked about a little bit of it, but she had experience with English learners, which I think is really important, just a wide range. One of the things I thought was important, she, when she came to her latest district, she addressed the needs for improvement for literacy, for early childhood, you know, looking at some of the literacy before students are tested, and putting things in place at that point so that when they are tested in a few years, you know, hopefully, we can see some kind of improvement. That's hard to do when you don't have a state curriculum, which I believe they don't have in Massachusetts, a mandated curriculum. But I know that that was something that I thought was pretty impressive, that the literacy rates increased, I think, 6% or 7%. And I apologize, I don't have all the numbers and things, but that was just something that stuck with me. She felt a need for changing the way communication with parents and community was happening, because she didn't feel, and the community didn't feel like they were being heard, and that was something very important to her, which I think is really important to all of us and was important to our community and in some of the things that President Erickson talked about. And then, finally, just, I mean, there's a lot more things, but this really stuck with me. She had looked at her district, the different funding for the different schools. So, kind of like in Orange Unified, one side of the district had more, you know, Title I schools. She had a very diverse district, just like this. Others, you know, not Title I, different funding, kind of some of the inequities, and she looked at a way to try to equalize some of that funding. We know that equal doesn't mean the same for everybody, and we need to make sure that everybody is getting what they need, and I think that was something really important to her. Looking, again, as President Erickson mentioned, looking at the needs of all of our students, all of her students, and I think she'll do the same for us here. And that was just something that really stuck with me. So, I was just really impressed with everything. So, I could go on, but I'll stop and let everybody else talk. Thank you.
Trustee Page?
Thank you. I kind of want to take a step back and also share and be thankful and grateful for the process that took place in order to search for a superintendent. As Superintendent Christensen mentioned, like, we haven't gone through a full process in many years. And so, it was a new process for all of us. We did receive over 1,000 survey results.
1,000?
2,000. And so, it was great to see that in multiple languages as well, the feedback from not just students, staff, but our community members into what kind of characteristics were important to them in looking for a superintendent. In addition to that, there were many focus groups, and two that stand out to me are that elementary school students were also able to share their priorities and characteristics of what they look for in a leader. And then also, another one held off-site, held in Spanish, so families were able to share a lot of that as well. The feedback was pretty similar across many populations, and it was helpful to us when we were narrowing down who we were going to select for an interview. The other thing that I definitely want to add is that we wouldn't have been able to do this without our amazing executive assistant, Karen Eric. So, I just want to give a shout out to her. She did everything that you can imagine behind the scenes, like scheduling the focus groups and doing everything within such a short timeline. So, I know on behalf of all of us, we're grateful and thankful for everything that you did in order to get us here. So, Dr. Monades stands out from the other candidates, not only because of her commitment to all students, but the dedication that she has with connecting with families in both English and Spanish. And that's a concern that I've heard from multiple school sites, where families who speak Spanish mainly don't feel truly connected to their school site. Whether they have questions, they don't really have that go-to person. And so, I love that that's something that she focuses on in order to change that into a norm in our district. In addition, I'm also excited for our students who will grow and look up to a transformational leader who looks like them, talks like them, and will include them in decision-making. So, that's, oh, thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Yamazaki?
Yes. I've said this at a couple of meetings earlier, so I might be repeating myself, but I think it's definitely worth reiterating. Selecting a superintendent is one of the most important responsibilities a school board undertakes. And as you know, over the past few months, we've been working hard to do a comprehensive and rigorous search, and that included stakeholder input through surveys, in-person meetings with staff, parents, and community members. And we put together a collective vision for the future of our schools. We were committed to finding a leader with experience, vision, and heart to guide our district forward. As mentioned, retained one of the most respected and experienced and widely-used consultants in this area to assist us with the process. Every step of the way was clear, transparent, and well-thought-out. As mentioned, 24 candidates applied, and we had a great pool to choose from. And throughout the process, interview process, Dr. Monades demonstrated not only a thorough understanding of education and a track record of strong leadership, but also a genuine passion for students, teachers, and public education. She brings a thoughtful, collaborative approach and a clear focus on equity, academic excellence, and she cares about the well-being of every child in our schools. Let's see. We heard from community members that they wanted someone who had superintendency experience, and she does. She has superintendency experience in the last district she was at. We also heard, well, and I want to also mention that she was in a leadership position since 2013, so that's a long time. We also heard from the community that they wanted someone who was a teacher and a principal and has that experience. And she was a teacher and a principal in Pomona District for almost 20 years. We also heard from the community that they wanted someone with a background in education. She has a PhD, a master's in education from Claremont, and a bachelor's from UCI. So, she's held positions, and she has education all in Southern California. We also heard from the community that they wanted someone who is familiar with the area and with multilingual experience. And as mentioned, she's from this area. Most of her education, network, and work experience is here in Southern California. And I will just mention that one of the reasons why she went to Massachusetts is because her daughter went to school out there. And of course, we follow, sometimes we want to follow our kids, but her kid came back here, and so, yeah, we don't always have to follow our kids, right? So, and I just want to mention the impressions that I had during the interview. She believes that work is about people. We work together to support all students. She values listening and establishing a relationship. She is a problem solver, and she encourages constructive feedback. Her values align with our strategic plan and will work to refine it. She believes that communication is key for good organizational health. She plans to have listening and learn, sorry, she plans to have a listening and learning plan. She thinks it's very important to engage students. She created a family and community roundtable where she was, and she plans to do something similar here. She believes in continuous improvement, not only for students, but for staff as well. She is bilingual, and she has a diverse experience, as mentioned previously. So, I was really impressed with her. I was impressed with her knowledge of our district. She did a lot of research on our district as well. And she, as Trustee Page mentioned at our meeting earlier, she actually went around to every one of our schools to see where they were and just really tried to take a look to see how they were, and before the interview. And so, she was impressed how big our district geographically is. So, I'm excited about the future under her leadership, her experience, values, and commitment align with the goals that we set as a district, and we believe that she'll bring new energy and direction. And we look forward to working with her, and just really excited about bringing the district to even greater levels. Thank you. Oh, I do want to thank everyone who contributed to the process, too. That's really important. The stakeholders, the teachers, our parents, they contributed greatly in developing this profile. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Vane?
So, we didn't just get like a compilation of what people said. We got the open-ended responses, like all of them. And I wanted to share that something that really stood out to me was how many people mentioned that Orange feels like a small town, and our community feels that way and has this small-town feel, even though it's actually quite large. And I hope that Dr. Monades, she calls herself a builder, and I hope that, you know, going forward, we can all work together to build our community and build our district. Also, in the letters that were provided on her behalf, people noted her resourcefulness. And one thing I'm realizing is that we just don't have as big of a pot of money as we would like in education, and that that is going to be really important to look at our very large space and our large district and figure out, you know, where are the areas that are needed. She came to the interview extremely well-prepared, as others have noted, and I found her to be very articulate and easy to communicate with. So...
Thank you. Trustee Glass?
How often can you say that we actually hired the most qualified person? How often can you say that we hired the most qualified person and stand on it? Everything that my colleagues just mentioned, outstanding. There is, there was, there will be no better individual to take on this position at this particular time. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you. So, I'll give some of the reasons. I have a, I actually did look up a lot of the statistics. I watched her before we interviewed her. I did a lot of research, you know, during the process and just tried to gather as much information as I could. But I think, as you said, she definitely was the most qualified, but she was also just so incredibly articulate. So, I just think she's going to be so good for this community in terms of her ability to lead, her ability to communicate. But you know, every, obviously, every district is different. We all face different challenges. But I saw that throughout her entire 31 years in education, she built a remarkable record of accomplishments in a variety of districts and a variety of leadership roles. And I do think that that variety of experience is really important when somebody's coming. And when they come from the outside, I think that that can be helpful as well, because they're bringing a different perspective. It's not going to be, you know, "This is how we do it in Orange Unified." We're going to have a really fresh set of eyes that I think is going to be wonderful. She's committed to building programs that are sustainable. That doesn't always result in immediate results. She's been at her current district for three years, but she's building improvements that will sustain her organization over time. Test scores are obviously snapshots, and they never really capture the full story of student progress or success. It doesn't capture the dedication of educators or the deep commitment that makes a district strong. But what does tell the story is leadership, someone who listens, someone who communicates and takes decisive action. And that's exactly what Dr. Monades has done in every district that she's served. She comes with overwhelming recommendations, positive recommendations. And as somebody mentioned, she did just recently serve as a superintendent in a district similar in size to ours, but which had a lot of different issues. They really weren't as advanced as we were, but she brought to them a strategic plan. She brought and formed an Educator Advisory Council, a Superintendent Student Advisory Council for both high school and middle school. She launched a Family and Community Engagement Roundtable Office and developed and resourced and trained school climate and culture teams at all schools, and so much more. Her track record speaks for itself. She increased early literacy skills by 6%, as Trustee Pelley said in Worcester. She expanded early college and dual enrollment by 21.2% for all 11th and 12th graders. Of the EL and former EL students, their numbers in those courses increased by 18.7%. She improved access for students with disabilities by 25.8%. And she championed AP coursework, boosting participation by over 20% and raising passage rates by nine points. Those aren't just numbers. Those are real students. Those are real opportunities, and that's real progress. That means something to these students. When she was in San Bernardino, 88% of the schools under her supervision improved academically. 71% of the chronically low-performing schools improved academically. And 100% of her high schools improved on the College and Career Indicator, with two receiving Gold Level recognition. And that's just a glimpse of her accomplishments. From a fiscal standpoint, she successfully reduced their annual budget in her current district by $22 million. She increased maintenance by 134%, the safety funding by 1,040%. And when she was in San Bernardino, she successfully decreased costs in transportation and decreased the structural deficit by $15 million. In 2023 and 2024 alone, she was awarded by the Chamber of Commerce in Worcester as a game changer. She was listed in Power 100 as one of the most influential professionals in central Massachusetts. She was nationally recognized as a Superintendent to Watch. She was named a Woman to Watch by the Worcester Magazine and named Exceptional Latina in Education for Central Worcester State Representatives. There's a lot, and there's a lot more. But Orange Unified is special, and we were looking for someone who would apply her expertise to our district's unique needs, and we found that leader in Dr. Monades. She's committed to transparency, open communication, and tackling challenges directly. And she is ready to work alongside anyone who is here. ready to work alongside anyone who is here in good faith to work with her, really, truly, to work beside her. That is what she wants. She wants to hear from you. Our community is our greatest strength. We've seen that over the last couple of years. Our teachers, administrators, and staff are the heart of our schools, and our families are invested. As a board made up of parents, alumni, former employees, and longtime advocates, we know that this is a shared devotion that makes Orange Unified strong. And we, I think, all of us are extremely confident that Dr. Menares will embrace that spirit and work tirelessly alongside all of us and help every student in Orange Unified thrive. The process was intensive. It was time-consuming, but I think it's brought us exactly what we hoped for, a leader ready to take our district into the future. And we're excited about that. So, any, why don't we start with our public comments, then? Okay. Esteban Villa?
President, trustees, superintendent, and members of the board, good evening. My name is Esteban Villa, and I proudly serve as a representative for our transportation employees and classified staff across OUSD. Tonight, we mark the beginning of a new chapter, one that brings hope, opportunity, and a renewed sense of purpose with the arrival of our new superintendent. I want to sincerely welcome you and express the optimism many of us feel. Your leadership presents a chance to rebuild trust, open new lines of communication, and truly listen to those who work every day to make the district function. This district is filled with dedicated individuals, teachers, administrators, and especially classified professionals, who serve our students with pride, often without recognition. We are the first to arrive and the last to leave. We are the quiet hands behind student meals, safety records, classrooms, and transportation. But with that dedication also comes a responsibility to speak when something isn't right. In transportation, many employees have raised concerns about how they've been treated after speaking up, about being excluded from fair assignments or facing disciplinary actions without due process. While these experiences may not represent every department, they are real, and they, they've affected morale, trust, and the ability to feel safe at work. Let me be clear, this is not about blame. This is about partnership. It is about the need to build a culture where policies are applied fairly. Voices are welcomed, not silenced, and where honesty is not punished by, but appreciated. Transportation workers, custodians, nutrition staff, instructional aides, clerical employees, maintenance crews, campus supervisors, and all classified staff, we are not background noise. We are the front line. We are the backbone. We are the foundation this district runs on. We want to be heard, respected, and included in the conversations that affect our work and our students. To our, to our new superintendent, we want to work with you. We are hopeful that your leadership will bring a new era of transparency, accountability, and dignity for all employees. The issues we raise are not meant to challenge you, but to inform you and to invite collaboration in fixing them. We believe in the potential of this district, and we believe the best way to serve students is by respecting those who serve them. Thank you for your time, and welcome. We look forward to building something better together.
Crystal Miles?
Good evening, Board. It's not going to be a surprise when I say that I'm not in agreement with your decision. I think I'm the, in the lion's den here this evening, which is absolutely fine. My concerns are, what I've heard from all of you is you've talked about an extensive process, and I have no doubt it was an extensive process. I've been to some of the LedgeCo meetings. But none of you are sharing the actual survey results. And I was one of those community members that participated in the survey. So I would like to formally make a Public Records Act request that the survey results be released. My address is on the card. I know that sometimes it has to be written, but I don't think that you can question legal. I don't think that it has to be a written request, so I'm formally requesting the survey results for that. I think that's really important. I was not for the recall, as you all know. And I think perhaps the board is missing a very important component. The recall was, as many said over and over, too far to the right. The recall of the, of the members caused the board, it was too far to the right. They didn't want that far. And a lot of the people that I've spoken to said that when they were actively working pro-recall, that they did it because they wanted someone to land in the middle. And based on this superintendent's public social media alongside district news, some of her self-proclaimed social ideologies, I believe you guys landed way over there to the left. So I, I'm, there's a missing middle there. And I think that you guys are doing it to service to the middle section of people that worked hard on that recall. All the qualifications that you guys mentioned, I would hope every superintendent had that. You guys had a service, that a consulting service, and I would hope that the five that they brought you all demonstrated that. So you haven't given us any reason other than one, which is she's bilingual. But I know that you have interpreters to help with that. So I have to really question this decision. I'm worried about her practice of restorative practices and what that's going to do to our SROs and to the safety of all the students on, on campus. As far as the data, you guys put out a thing saying that she had remarkable, students showed remarkable success. Her tenure was three years as a superintendent. It's really hard to demonstrate remarkable success when things like that take years. The MCAS shows data differently. Yes, there was some improvement in ELA, but overall, the ELA did not improve for the middle schoolers. And absenteeism increased and graduation rates decreased. So I thank you for your time, and thank you for replying to my email. You were the only one, and that demonstrates class. Thank you.
J.J. Mice?
Good evening, President Erickson, esteemed board members, and Superintendent Christensen. My name is J.J. Mice. I'm a resident in OUSD and the proud dad of a graduating OUSD senior. Go Spartans. I'd like to take a moment to thank the board and Mr. Christensen and all the district staff for the top-notch way that the search process for our new superintendent was conducted. Personally, I trust this board. I see up there 2.9 PhDs, almost a PhD, a JD. There are four educators. And personally, having volunteered on Measure K and Measure S, I've seen up close Trustee Yamazaki and Trustee Erickson's commitment to OUSD. It's, it's, there's, there's a lot of deep involvement and deep, deep love for the students of this district on that, on that dais. So I trust that, that you would push yourselves into it and work for the best outcome. In my view, it was a process that was thoughtful, deliberative, collaborative, and transparent. I understand that Leadership Associates, the executive search firm that was selected, conducted direct interviews with, as was said a few times, thousands of community members, district stakeholders, people with involvement in OUSD such as PTA presidents, Measure S volunteers, DLAC committee members, and foundation members for input on the qualities and characteristics the ideal superintendent candidate would need for a district in our times. There were multiple open invitation community forums. I myself attended one. And as an OUSD parent, I appreciate that I could be directly involved in the process, and that my input mattered. When I learned that Dr. Menares was the selected candidate, I did what a lot, I'm sure a lot of folks did, and I went on the Google, and at first blush, I liked what I found. First, not one, but two PhDs. Secondly, I think it's fantastic that a district like OUSD that has a sizable ELL community and many students where the primary language at home is not English, having not only two board members who are fluent, but a superintendent that is bilingual, is fantastic. Access for this community is critical. But what stood out for me was that the leaders of Worcester Public Schools, the district that Dr. Menares leaves behind, sought to find someone themselves who would specifically continue the programs and structure that she instituted. Mayor Jose Petty, who also chairs the school board in Worcester, in announcing her successor, stated, "I really believe this vote is about the wellness of the district. I think our successor has to believe in the systems that have been put in place by our current superintendent. If we really believe in the work the superintendent has done, we need someone who has been involved in shaping the district for the past three years." I'll cut it short. I think this-
Good evening. Is this working? Hello? Good evening, school board members, President Erickson, the rest of the trustees, Mr. Christensen, and the staff, and everyone here. First of all, I would like to say congratulations to our school board for undertaking and carrying out through to a successful completion, a careful, very professional, as well as a very timely process of searching for and selecting a permanent superintendent for OUSD. It doesn't always happen that way. A very positive initial success indicator was that the leading California professional superintendent search firm agreed to head up our efforts. That doesn't always happen. The fact that it did, that was a significant vote of confidence for our school, our school district. Next came the very intentional and robust outreach to stakeholders for their input. I, along with hundreds and thousands of others, gave input, and I was impressed with the opportunities that we were given. Once the search began, another very significant indicator developed, the receipt of two dozen applicants. That's amazing. All high-level school leaders who were interested in coming to OUSD to join our excellent school district and to lead us to new heights of education excellence. That's great. In my many years on the school board, one of the most gratifying experiences, and I had it many times, and many of you have had this, too, when we hear from a new employee, some of their first impressions of Orange Unified School District as they meet and get acquainted with our district, invariably, they comment on how excellent our people are, our teachers, our support staff, our administrators, our students, our families. They always comment what a great community and what a great school district we have. Sometimes, you know, when you're in the midst of the forest, you don't appreciate the trees, but when someone comes in new and they tell you, this is just not the way it is everywhere, it makes you very proud of where you are. And so I look forward to that with, with the new superintendent, Dr. Rachel Menares, once she arrives. I listened to a video of her, and she seems like a very good communicator. She projects positivity, and I feel positive about her as well. I have great faith in your careful, studied, and wise selection process. Usually, when you plan well, things turn out well. And I'm very enthusiastic about the future.
Thank you, Mrs. Moffett. Your input is important. Thank you. Okay, so, why don't we make a motion, and then we can have discussion. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the contract? Trustee Yamazaki?
I'll second.
Okay, Trustee Glass. All right, any discussion?
I just want to make one comment, and that is, caring about kids is not a left- or right issue. Standing up for public education is not a left- or right issue. Increasing opportunity for special education students is not a left- or right issue. Increasing access to AP classes is not a left- or right issue. These are real accomplishments that everybody, I would hope, would support, and these are not, these are not political things. Public education should not be political. It should not. It's about the kids. It's about improving outcomes for our students. And it's about, yes, fighting for your students, fighting for justice for your students. That's what we hope we have, is a leader who will fight for our district and for our students. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes 6-0-1.
Thank you. And if you're watching Dr. Menares, which I suspect you are, we can't wait to work with you. And everybody feels the same, so thank you. All right, moving on. 7B Citizens' Oversight Committee appointments to fill vacancies. And, I'm sorry, yes, Ms. Hol, Ms. Holguen.
Thank you, Board President Erickson, and good evening, board members, trustees, and our audience here tonight. Tonight, we're seeking your approval for appointments for our Citizens' Oversight Committee to fill two vacant positions. We currently have two positions that need to be filled. The first one is a parent-teacher organization representative. The position became vacant on August 26, 2024, when Nicole Jones became ineligible following her students' graduation from high school. The second one is a representative-at-large, and this position became vacant on January 26, 2025, when Bill Campbell resigned. To fill these vacancies, we conducted outreach through multiple communication channels, posted announcements on the district's official Facebook page, featured the openings on OUSD website, shared information through our district, district Instagram account, and additionally, our current chair, Diana Fessinelli, during the committee annual report, if you recall, pitched a recruitment announcement. Our recruitment efforts resulted in three applicants. The applications were reviewed by the executive cabinet for specific representation needed. And based on our review of the applications, tonight, we are recommending Nicole Jones, who was previously on the committee, to now join as the representative-at-large, and also Kimberly Buchanan as a parent-teacher organization representative for your approval. I would also like to note that any qualified applicants not selected for appointment at this time will have their applications kept on file for consideration should additional vacancies occur within the next year. So that is the action item in front of you.
Okay. Thank you. It is recommended the Board of Education approve and appoint Kimberly Buchanan to the Citizens' Oversight Committee to fill the vacant position of parent-teacher organization representative, and Nicole Jones to fill the vacant position of representative-at-large. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that.
Trustee Pelley, do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who? Trustee Bane, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes 6-0-1. Thank you.
And now that the, and now that the motion passed, I do believe we do have our two representatives here tonight. So if you would-
Come on down.
-come and-
Thank you.
And we want to thank you in advance. We want to thank you in advance for volunteering. As we all know, this is a volunteer. However, we appreciate that you are willing to step up. So, thank you.
And we know both of you are super volunteers, and you do a lot. So, thank you for adding this to the plate. Okay. What's that? Yes?
Alice, thank you for sharing your mommy's time.
Thank you. Okay, item 8A, district calendar. Isn't it?
Good evening, President Erickson, members of the board, Superintendent Christensen, Cabinet, and community. Present to the board this evening for information is the proposed 2026-2027 district calendar. It is district practice to maintain the approved calendars, one for current year and two years in advance. The proposed calendar- The proposed calendar was developed by the Calendar Committee, and this evening, Dr. Kevin Astor, Executive Director of Human Resources, is here to provide additional details.
Good evening. Our Calendar Committee began their work back in December. The group is composed of representatives from elementary, middle, high school and charter schools, as well as district departments, such as Transportation, Special Education, and both of our employee associations. The committee has developed and recommended a proposed calendar for the 2026-27 school year, which is then used in the development of the employee work calendars. The parameters guiding the construction of the proposed calendar stem from the work originally done when the district transitioned from the previous T-track and S-track calendars to a unified modified T-track calendar during the era of year-round education. The proposed 26-27 calendar maintains consistency with past and current board-approved calendars with key features that include 180-day instructional year, an 80-day first semester that ends during the third instructional week after Thanksgiving break, a 100-day second semester, a one-week Thanksgiving recess, three full instructional weeks between Thanksgiving and winter break, a three-week winter recess, a one-week spring recess, the school year ending on a Thursday in the first or second full week of June, depending on the start date, and a start date that falls between one and a half and two and a half weeks before Labor Day. The proposed calendar meets all state requirements for instructional days and minutes. It has been reviewed by both the District Calendar Committee and the Executive Cabinet. The draft calendar is scheduled to be presented to the Board of Education for formal action at an upcoming meeting. An additional note, the committee did also discuss the timing of the November Professional Development Day. It was recommended that future calendars schedule this day on the first Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday following Halloween. While this does not affect the 26-27 calendar, since Halloween falls on a Saturday, it will help minimize instructional disruptions in future years while supporting the planning of professional development activities. Now, if there are any questions or clarification needed, we are happy to provide additional information via the weekly updates.
Thank you, Mr. Astor. Does anybody have any questions? Anybody? Yes.
I just, and I know the answer because I heard the answer, but I thought maybe other people might want to know. Can you just clarify why the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
So, the discussion on the Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday stemmed from the optimizing of the professional development opportunity based on, you know, employee participation and attendance, as well as the availability of, you know, professional developers, you know, and vendors, and so that was a recommendation that we got from our Curriculum and Instruction Department that was brought to the committee.
Thank you. I know from a teacher's point of view, the day after Halloween is a big deal. I get that, and I think we just need to try to get Halloween changed to the last Saturday in October. It would just make more sense, right? And maybe we can start with, I have two of my city council members here, so maybe we start with Villa Park. You guys are here. Three, oh, I didn't see you, I'm sorry. Councilman Frackleton, I didn't see you. You got a hat, you got, yeah. Sorry. We won't talk about that now, then. I'll be- Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you so much. Thank you for your work. Okay, item 8B, the school consolidation update. Ms. Holgyn. And you said all the public comments are for unengagedized. Okay, thank you.
Thank you again, Board President Erickson. So I'd like to provide an update on the progress of our school consolidation committee meetings. First, I want to acknowledge the diverse representation we've achieved on this committee. As you see on the screen, these are the names of all the participants who volunteered their time and expertise. We have multiple stakeholders from all our feeder patterns. While we initially faced some recruitment challenges due to the original meeting time, with the valuable support of our council PTA, I'm pleased to report that we now have 13 parents serving on our combined committee of 34 members. During our first meeting, we did discuss the possibility of shifting meeting times to accommodate more parent participation, and after discussion, the consensus among the committee members was to maintain the original time slot of five to seven. To date, we have held two productive meetings. The first meeting focused on establishing the committee's role and examining enrollment trends at the state, county, and district levels. We clarified that the committee was formed to develop options by analyzing data across several key areas: capacity in enrollment, education and support services, facilities, transportation, and geographic location. At our second meeting, the committee began their substantive work by analyzing data and conducting capacity assessments. Through this initial analysis, they have already started to identify potential options that they will continue to evaluate in subsequent meetings as additional layers of information become available. I must say, we assembled a very inquisitive group of stakeholders. Their questions and perspectives demonstrate deep engagement with the process. We are confident that they will provide us thoughtful, well-considered options that will help guide the recommendations we ultimately will bring forward to this board. We look forward to continuing to provide updates on the committee's progress in the coming months, and of course, welcome any questions based.
Thank you. Just as a comment, I have heard nothing but positive things about this, and that we've really pulled a lot of people from a lot of communities in, and the data that's being presented is really in-depth and valuable, so we're off to a good start on this. I think it's a really important conversation that we're having, and thank you for bringing in so many people and so much expertise. Anybody else? Nope? Okay. Thank you. All right. Item 8C, Governance Team Handbook. That's technically a board item as well. Right. So, we started the year with a governance workshop, the purpose of which was to really create some new norms. We figured we had a new opportunity with, a good opportunity with so many new board members, and we really sort of had the opportunity to have a fresh start and create some norms moving forward so that we can truly give the community the best of ourselves and govern in the best way possible. So we created a Governance Team Handbook. We have the draft here today, and this is, again, just a draft. It's got, I know I kind of went through some of it and made some changes that I thought, but do we have any comments from the board, or anything that you have a question about, or that doesn't look like what we talked about? Anything like that? We're going to bring it back at a future meeting for approval, but this is just here as an opportunity to discuss it. Yeah. Trustee Page.
I also want to add that this came out of an ad hoc committee of the board, so trustee Yamazaki and trustee Glass helped me last year to help work with our consultants to finalize this and then create a handbook that's more than one page.
You are right, and I'm sorry I didn't acknowledge that work before. I, that was so long ago. Like, eight months ago. Thank you. Thank you for that, and thank you to both of you for doing that. Okay, trustee Pelley.
Just quickly, I wanted to thank you, also, President Erickson, because even though Dr. Glass and I had been on the board for a while, with all the new members, it really was extremely helpful, and I think just to have something that we can all agree on, talking about our protocols and how, you know, the word "respect" is in here a lot, and listening and open dialogue, and I just, you know, I just think it's wonderful that you're helping us with that. You all who are veterans and have done this for a while, this is really helpful, and I think it's important that we're letting everybody know what we're doing and how we're working together to really try to make this board as effective as we can. We're lucky, so far, we all like each other. We'll see, hopefully, well, maybe Dr. Glass shaking his head, he can talk about that later. But I just feel like this is really important, and I want to thank you for the extra meetings. Yes, it's been work, but I think it's been really important, so thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. I know you love the extra meetings, so I appreciate that.
I have to address what trustee Pelley just mentioned. I love everybody, but I think that the important thing about this Governance Handbook is it has the potential to be a living document, and the goal is to maintain respect on the dyes, and it's important for the community to see that we are working together. The idea is to have a diversity of ideas to be able to express here for the individuals that we actually represent, and this is the document that helps to guide that work, and that's why it's very important, and I appreciate your leadership in this. And I just want to make that very important statement to the community who's listening, that we are, our goal is to represent you and to do it in a respectful manner.
Thank you. Yes, this is meant to definitely be a sustained effort at good governance and civility as well, and really, being able to talk about issues we may not agree upon. We don't all agree on everything, but be able to do that in a civil and productive manner. So, if there are no corrections, or if you have anything, before it comes back, you can certainly contact the superintendent and let him know, and I guess we'll probably bring it back in June, maybe?
No, probably not, in two weeks.
Oh, that's right. I forgot, we have another meeting. Sorry.
Somebody called a lot of meetings.
I know, I did.
We'll be back soon.
Yeah, our next meeting. Thank you. Thanks for reminding. Reminding.
Sure, rubbing it in.
Okay, let's see, what do we have next? All right, now we ju, okay, now we just have consent items. So consent items are acted upon by one motion, however, any such item can be considered separately at a board member's request and will be acted upon following approval of the consent items. Does anybody want to pull an item? Okay. Do I have a motion to pass the consent items? Okay, trustee Glass, do I have a second? Trustee Pelley, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six zero one. All right, finally, we are at public comment on non-agendized items. Madam Clerk?
Okay, I'll start calling names, and then also stand by to kind of have a line going. So first up, we have Rebecca Gamboa, and behind her, we'll have Jorge Gamboa Jr., so Julian, and then Jorge Gamboa after him. Are they here? Nope? Okay. Veronica? And then after Veronica, there's Ada DeLeone and Stacy Wu.
Hello, my name is Veronica Tarnofsky, and I am the parent of two boys at Villa Park High School. They are part of the aquatics program there. One is a swimmer, and one plays water polo and swims. And I'm here to follow up on the plans regarding the Villa Park High School swimming pool. I know that back in December, there was a meeting that discussed the state of all the pools at OUSD, and so that's why I'm here. I really want to understand, what are the next steps? I know that Villa Park had the most health violations at that time, and I remember that because I started calculating in my head, oh my gosh, Lorenzo was playing water polo, then he'd go to swim, and then, you know, there was the games and the meat, so all that started calculating in about how much he was in that water. So, besides that, my questions to you are, what is happening with the Murtha Pool? I know that there was a deposit made on it, so what, where are we on that? Second, what is going to happen when the Villa Park and the Canyon Pools go down? They're the same age, they're both in, you know what type of condition, I don't need to explain that, but what is the plan? Can El Medina or Orange really support three schools if they're to go down? Or two, depending what the season is? So that's my question on that. And then also, what are the new plans? What are the plans for a new pool? So, that's, that's where I'm, that's what I'm asking of everyone here. Thank you.
Ada?
Okay. Good evening, board trustees and superintendent. Thank you all for lending your ears tonight. I'm Ada DeLeone, Orange homeowner, parent to three kids who started in and are still attending OUSD schools, and all three who are experienced competitive swimmers, all who started at our Hart Park Pools. I'm here tonight first to appeal to you to revisit the real and great need of a new onsite pool at VPHS, and secondly, to request reassessment of pool time rental decisions with respect to OC Gold Aquatics, that OUSD should abide with its policies, not Oakland's, and consider some new flexibilities. Dedicated swim-only programs are not offered at OUSD high schools in a year-round basis, so any time away from the pool contributes to athlete regression. Therefore, it is essential for our more serious student athletes to seek out clubs that do offer year-round training to maintain consistency and peak performance. To this endeavor, OC Gold Aquatics, formerly known as Orca, has an established feeder program partnership with VPHS since 1987, serving our local community and whose member majority is populated by OUSD residents and OUSD schooling families. Many of our VP and OC Gold Scholar athletes swim at least 10 hours, up to 20 hours or more, five to six days a week, before and after school at VPHS when available. As testament and direct result of this mutually benefiting alliance, 13 VPHS swimmers are competing in CIF D1 this very week. Eight of the 13 are current and/or longtime OC Gold members, also contributing to VP's recent two-year consecutive league champ titles in both boys' and girls' finals, and a long-awaited CIF D2 champ title last year. However, because of our home pool's condition, our athletes have had to train at our Elmo and Orange sister pools. Since the Band-Aid repaired, the VP pool is only supposed to last a year. We can foresee a continuing cycle of problematic delays unless we get a new pool. In addition, OC Gold's rental pool times at both sister pools have at one point been displaced by renting out to a direct OUSD competitor. Moving forward, specifically to protect the VPHS and OC Gold Aquatics partnerships for our students, I ask you all to keep us in mind as times change and we adapt together. Please continue to support your students by, one, seriously reconsidering the real need for a new reliable onsite pool at VP, and, two, prioritizing OC Gold partnership as a local and longstanding asset, allowing flexibility to accommodate OC Gold pool times over non- or limited-based non-OUSD majority renters, and most urgently, when its home VP pool is down. Please remember that a majority of VP's top swimmers are also OC Gold members. Thank you.
Stacy Wu? And after Stacy, it's Robert Frackleton.
Hi. Hello. Hi, good evening, board members. My name is Stacy Say. I'm a constituent for 40 years in OUSD Area 5. I'm also a Villa Park High School alum and parent of OUSD students, one of whom is a competitive swimmer with OC Gold, a local swim club made up of 98% OUSD residents. Due to repeated breakdowns of the Villa Park Pool, we have a recurring problem of securing pool time for swimmers to train. We are constantly competing with groups from outside U.S. OUSD for pool time. The Villa Park Pool is unreliable and long past its lifetime. The recent pool fix is only temporary, and it's just a matter of time before it goes down again. We need the board to ensure that facilities follow established priority guidelines for pool use, so that programs serving OUSD swimmers always have access over non-OUSD residents. Moreover, we need the board to take decisive leadership to build a new pool that is safe, reliable, and large enough to accommodate our aquatics programs. We need a pool to attract and retain competitive athletes to OUSD. We cannot keep kicking the can down the road. I believe in the saying, "Do it once, do it right." Why continue to throw good money after bad into a pool that is long past its lifetime? It's going to break down again at any moment. I implore you to take decisive leadership to minimize downtime for our athletes. I say it's time to save our district money by building a new pool as soon as possible. a new pool as soon as possible. Please show the young athletes and the Orange community what local leadership can do to support their needs. Thank you.
Robert Frackleton, and then up on deck is Nicole Jones.
Thank you. Thank you, Board, and thank you, Madam President and Superintendent Christensen. Congratulations on your Boardiversary, Sarah, and so forth, and Stephen. Robert Frackleton, I am a proud Orange Unified School District alum, kindergarten all the way through 12th, and then came back, and my three kids are also all the way kindergarten through 12th. I spent a lot of time with the aquatics program as a participant, as well as my, my oldest child was also a water polo player and swimmer at Villa Park High, as well as the feeder program that went into Villa Park High School, which was then called Orange Aquatics, then Orange Regional Aquatics, and now OC Gold. I, first off, the school looks fantastic. I drive down Taft, and Villa Park High School has never looked better. And it makes me so proud that I made all those phone calls for Measure K and Measure S, and convinced my 85-year-old parents to actually vote for it. And I am so upset that, that behind the wonderful, beautiful school on Taft Avenue, that our gymnasium, our pool, and our football practice field are unfortunately not working. Now, the pool, they got back in the water this week, that's great, but as has been said, it's a Band-Aid. And we know it's going to be a year or two before this thing comes to a head. We've kicked the can down the road, but we need to come up with a permanent solution. And I really, really encourage you and, and our new superintendent to make it a high priority. We've got to come up with, with a, with a solution for the pool. And I know several years ago, the pool became a political pawn in politics, and I don't know anything about that, but I do know that aquatics is not a far-left issue, it's not a far-right issue, it's an everybody issue. We all want to do aquatics. And, and President Erickson said it right. It's not a left-to-right issue, it's, it's what's right for the kids. So we need a pool, it's not political, it's real, we need it, and I encourage you to please, please, please focus your attention on, on getting the problem solved. Thank you very much.
Nicole Jones, and then after, it's Anastasia Ford.
Good evening, Board President Erickson, esteemed Board and Superintendent Christensen. Sorry you guys were so nice to me earlier, and I'm going to be a little bit hard on you. I am here tonight just with profound disappointment. I'm here to talk again about the Villa Park High School pool. I have stood at this very podium, spoken to this Board and the Boards before you, on this very issue over 27 months ago. This topic has become the very embodiment of what people say is wrong with government: endless bureaucracy, endless delays, but no real action, no results. In that time, we have seen record inflation, skyrocketing costs, supply chain disruptions, all of which have made this project even more difficult to envision. But here's the worst part. The delays we have experienced at the hands of this Board and the previous one are now costing this district, not just in dollars, though those are rising every day you fail to act, but in what matters most, our kids. Our kids are paying the price. For the second year in a row, there was no season kickoff pentathlon for our Villa Park swim team. Most practices and every meet were held in someone else's pool. Imagine being a student athlete and never once competing in your own school in front of your own community. You were warned this would happen 27 months ago. And what do we have to show for all that time? Some feasibility studies, some approvals, some rescinded approvals, but no timeline, no construction, no pool, no action. According to your own experts who spoke early on in this process, we could have almost had a new pool at Villa Park by now. This isn't about politics, but it is about unequal treatment. When the pool at El Medina High School went down, the discussion wasn't if you were going to fix it, it was how it would happen and for how much. But when it comes to Villa Park, we get delays, we get excuses, months without the issue even making it on the agenda. It's not on the agenda again tonight. Meanwhile, our Villa Park parents go to high schools like Foothill and Troy and marvel at what a real, functional, modern pool looks like. That experience should not be a luxury, it should be normal. Working facilities should be normal. So tonight, I am simply asking for a path forward, whatever that looks like. Maybe the lease-leaseback model that has been discussed previously, maybe we structure it like the improvements to Fred Kelly Stadium and save over several years. Just give us something, a timelight, timeline, a vote, a commitment. Our students deserve it, our community deserves it. We have waited long enough. 27 months is 27 months too long. Thank you.
Anastasia? Stacia? And then Michelle Weisenberg after.
Hello. I'm not here about the pool, so, but I agree, something needs to happen. Yeah, okay. Hi, greetings, esteemed Board, members of the OUSD Board. I would like to express my concerns regarding the lack of street banners honoring our seniors throughout the city, a cherished tradition that has been upheld the past four years. The banners are predominantly showcased in the close proximity of the high schools for an extended duration of several months. I recognize that the resources allocated for COVID funds were previously used to support these banners and are no longer accessible. Our seniors also face challenges relating COVID. The eighth-grade graduations were conducted with drive-through format, and no awards were presented during the event. They began their high school journey with requirement of wearing masks and lack of social events. I would like to propose that parents be given the option to either engage in fundraising activities at the schools or to be able to purchase them on their own. The opportunity to acquire banners at Fred Kelly was, is currently limited in duration while our schools are diligently producing them in the Spider Labs. They also have increased the price from last year from $30 to $45 this year. I have one child who has consistently excelled as a student in honors and advanced math since fifth grade, and she has put in considerable effort to secure her admission this year at UCLA, which she received, there was a remarkable record breaking 173,651 applicants and an 8.6% rate of acceptance. Not only that, my daughter is also biracial. She is German and Kenyan, which is, puts her in the 1.2% category at Canyon. Her banner has the potential to inspire other children like her to pursue their aspirations for higher education. The banner was an anticipated symbol marking the conclusion of her 13 years here at OUSD. I have consistently engaged as a parent in all four schools within the district and that she has attended. I have participated in initiatives like Measure S and have been involved in the election of our Board members, and I found myself feeling let down regarding this situation. There exists a possibility for banners to be created at the Spider Labs at Elmo Canyon and Villa Park. I respectfully encourage the Board to reconsider their decision and acknowledge the hard work of the seniors for 2025. Thank you.
All right, last call for Rebecca, Julian, or Jorge?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jorge. I'm a resident of Villa Park, and I'm here also to show support for OC Gold. Swimming is more than just a sport, it helps build life skills. I swam my whole life at the local pool, and because of that, was able to go very far. And what I was able to do, the scholarships I was able to get, the places in the world I was able to travel, helped me become the professional I am today, the father I am today. When I considered Villa Park, I looked at the high school, their swim team, how they ranked, and it's exciting to walk and see that the swim team won CIF, if I'm not mistaken, a year or two ago. But it's extremely disappointing to see the pool. I know that everything is politics, and the person who built my pool has built a few pools. I know what their cost is, and I also know that whoever the contractors are that you'll give the contracts to will probably have friends who will all get a cut. So I would like for the public to be able to be engaged in this process, because we just want pool for our kids. We have a huge group of diverse kids, some that process life and things differently that depend on the proximity of the pool, because they have siblings. They don't have the ability of being taken to another pool 20 minutes away, because mom has to work. Mom depends on the neighbor to walk their kids to the swim pool. And like I said, it, this is a lifestyle that we're working on for our kids. It was really, really hard the last two months, trying to maneuver kids from one pool to the next, changing times, because those were the only slots allowed it. And I really hope that this is prioritized. I don't know if you guys were able to answer, but if you are, when can it be prioritized on the agenda? You know, how does that work? Because like I heard, it just keeps being talked about, but there's no action. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who spoke. We really appreciate you being here, appreciate your voice. And no, we can't answer. It's not on the agenda, so apologies. Let's see. Okay. Board staff recognition. Okay, do you, or comments? Who'd like to start? Trustee Pelley?
I'll make it quick. This was just a fun, another fun meeting. I love when we get to do all the recognitions of everybody. May is just kind of the fun celebratory month, celebrating our bus, our, our nurses and teachers, and we had Principal's Day, and I know we're going to be doing classified employees and just all of the end-of-the-year things. It's just really fun to do that. I won't go into detail, but I did get to attend our bus drivers' celebration, our avid scholarships, Prospect Schools' 60th anniversary. Other Board members may talk about that, because we had a lot of people there, but those were just really great community events. And just thank you to all of those involved in making those happen. It's a lot of work behind the scenes, but really fun. One thing I just, thank you for the Boardiversary. I didn't know if it was Board B-O-A-R-D or Board B-O-R-E-D, and I'm not sure if I want to know, but thank you for that. It's been a great year, been really fun, lots of things happening, and look forward to more. The last thing I just wanted to, to mention is that May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And I am just going to give a quick shout-out. I'm doing a, just a birthday fundraiser thing, but I'm not asking for money. I just want to say that the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention is something that I just wanted to call attention to. Many of us have been touched by suicide. I recently lost a friend of mine to suicide. The AFSP.org does a lot of great things as far as supporting suicide, depression, grief counseling, all kinds of things. One thing I just wanted to mention is, you can never ignore something that you think, oh, they're just joking, or especially with social media. If you see anything, just reach out. That's what happened with my friend, and we did reach out, and it was too late. Always just err on the side of, hey, I'm just checking in, even if you think someone's fine. I think as we've seen with a lot of, of famous, you know, celebrities and things, you don't know when someone's having a crisis. The Crisis Suicide Lifeline, 988, you can text or phone, I just wanted to add that. But I think just with Mental Health Awareness Month in general, the idea is to erase the stigma that's attached. You know, a lot of us will talk about, especially as we get older, we talk about all of our health impairments like it's no big deal, oh, I'm having this surgery, or whatever. There's nothing different when you have mental health issues. There's something you need to talk about, you need to get help, just the same as you would for any other physical condition. So please talk about it, you know, talk to people about it, look, look it up. If you want to find out more what our schools are doing, I know our counselors are doing a great job, and our psychologists, thankful that we have them. I know our national funding, who knows what's going to happen with mental health, but I hope that we can continue supporting all of our students, our staff. I know that we're all taken care of as well, with the resources from our district. But I just feel like it's important to, to just call that out, especially suicide prevention. So if you even think there's an issue, or even if you don't, just reach out to people. Better, better safe than sorry. So hopefully, everybody has great mental health, and we can continue celebrating all of our great things that are happening in OUSD this month. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Pelley, for talking about that. I know it takes a lot of courage to be able to share, especially when you've had a recent experience with a friend. There's also a resource for families that have young children called Bright Life Kids, and they're doing a campaign called Awareness to Action. So there's one-pagers to help parents have those conversations with young children on how to be able to talk about those feelings and get help if they need to. The other thing that I just want to make an announcement is that on May 17th at Fred Kelly Stadium, there's going to be an early learning roundup. It's a school readiness fair. It's the second year that our early learning team will host one, and it's going to be even bigger this year. They definitely have many more providers than they did last year. There's going to be free developmental screenings, in addition to a diaper drive, so families who have young children can go pick up some free diapers. In addition to a lot of different resources, I know last year, we also had our HR team have a table, because if our parents with young children are starting school, then maybe they would want to also work for our district, like our new duty supervisor positions, our three-hour positions that are really difficult to fill. So it'll be held at Fred Kelly next Saturday between 9:00 to 12:00.
Thank you. As we approach the end of the school year, I'm so happy to celebrate and support our students with all their activities, end-of-the-year concerts, competitions, assemblies, and of course, there will be promotions and graduations. And you should see our calendars getting quite full. But that's a good thing, because we want to be there to do what we can to support our students. This month, I went to Running Springs Elementary School three times. They had so many events there, and I'm just so happy to be able to be a judge at the science fair. They were sponsored by the new foundation, newly named foundation. They are in his, in existence. It's the Education Foundation of Anaheim Hills. They are now called the Stars Foundation. And so the parent volunteers helped to create a science fair for the kids, and the displays were awesome, the students were so well-spoken, and it was a great experience for the students and their families. I also went to the International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program. As part of the program, the sixth graders had the opportunity to research a topic on a global issue such as climate, water, environment, food. And so they reached a, they researched a problem, talk about what contributed to it, and they discuss ways they could, things that they can do to mitigate the problem. So they had these display boards you walked through, and you talked to the kids about their projects, and so they were pretty awesome. And I think Dr. Glass was there too, later on. And lastly, we were invited to attend Mrs. Seltikoff's class for a presentation on AAPI Heritage Month, and the month of May is AAPI Heritage Month. A parent volunteer, Mrs. Chan, created beautiful slides to celebrate and appreciate specific AAPI heritage and foods for the children that were specifically represented in the classroom. So a lot of the kids, their background was of Asian heritage, and so she highlighted them on the screen. And so I just felt like that she was acknowledging who they were, and all the kids participated, and it was a great experience. And so I want to thank Mrs. Chan for putting that together. And she also invited all the teachers to come and, and see the slides as well. And if you don't know Mrs. Chan, she does the most incre- incredible boards over at Running Springs. So every month, she changes out the board, she highlights what month it is, whether it's So every month, she changes out the board. She highlights what month it is, whether it's... I think right now, there is a board celebrating Arab-Americans. It was fantastic. So, I also attended two events at our Transportation Department, and we celebrated School Bus Drivers' Day. And the second one was the electric bus sale company, A to Z, brought food to our department there to celebrate the delivery of the 1,000th certified electric bus. We didn't get a thousand bus, but they made a thousand bus, and we are the recipient of the 1,000th bus. And they picked our district because we were one of the first districts to actually pilot the electric bus program. And so it was great to see all the corporations there. They wanted to acknowledge the support that our department has given them. Trustee Erickson and I also attended the services for Dr. Al Maharis. He's the former superintendent of schools in Orange County. He was well-respected and a huge supporter of our district, and he will be greatly missed. Two other things, sorry. I also attended the Addams Family musical performed by the Santiago Charter Middle School. And I wanted to add that it was Trustee Erickson's daughter, who was a teacher there, who actually produced the entire thing, and it was wonderful. The students were incredibly talented, and the production was top-notch. And it was hard to believe that these performers were only 12 and 13 years old. I mean, seriously, it was at the caliber of something you would see at Seegerstrom. It was that incredible. The singing was so awesome. Yeah, no, it was really good. I really enjoyed myself. And lastly, I wanted to thank the Anaheim Hills Elementary School parents and community for presenting me a PTA Honorary Service Award, along with other awesome volunteers at their open house. I'm grateful and I'm humbled to have received this recognition, and it was a big surprise to me. So I just want to just thank them for that acknowledgement.
First, I'd like to thank everyone who came to speak with us. I just want you to know that I hear you and I'm listening to your comments. I would also like to thank Trustee Yamazaki and Trustee Page for speaking about the importance of descriptive representation tonight. It is important for our students to see leaders, whether it's teachers or other people throughout the community, that look and sound like them. Throughout the past month, I've been very busy visiting our school sites. I visited Knoll Canyon, and I'd like to thank Principal Strickland for fielding my many questions about GATE. I wonder if we could, you know, have a board presentation or something sometime. I know plenty of parents are thinking about that and considering their options. I also visited Olive Elementary and had many more questions about Avid, and I'm really proud of them for being a model school there, and would like to thank Jeff Morgan for his time. And I visited El Medina High School, and it's been so interesting and inspiring to see that all that Principal King has done in his short time there. And there's a garden on the campus, and I'm excited to go see it next week and see their Spring into the Arts event. And in addition, I visited Parkside, and I can't believe how much Principal Lucas has going on in that school. She's got adult transition and several different home programs, and I'm really proud of the work that she has been doing there. I also, in the past month, have attended and heard many of the career days that have been happening at our schools, and I was excited to speak at one on the importance of being a professor and developing teaching opportunities for young children. And somewhat related to that, our Santiago Canyon College for Kids program opened earlier this week. And if you have an Orange Unified student ID, you can get a free week of camp. And so I encourage all of our families to look out for that. Thank you.
Okay. I want to begin by saying Happy Teacher Appreciation Week has already been stated, but it also is important for me to acknowledge two things. Number one, this Saturday is Dia de los Madres. So for, yeah. And on Sunday is Mother's Day in America, so I just wanted to say, mothers, you know, we respect you, we love you. We wouldn't be here without you, so thank you so much. That also happens to be my mother's birthday. She passed a few years ago. But May 11 is her birthday, and May 11 is Mother's Day. And she always wanted to make sure we separated the two, which is crazy, but I get it. So I'm thankful for her, and without her... So I wanted to say that we got a chance to go to West Orange for the ribbon-cutting of their wonderful playground. So that was awesome. It rained. It didn't rain just a little bit. It rained a lot. And the kids were out there swimming and having fun in the water. It was great. That was awesome. So I want to thank Principal Johnston for that. Also, the Palmyra Gate Magnet Open House was last week, and that was also awesome. Want to recognize all the remarkable teachers at Palmyra and also Mrs. Bletterman for all she does. And I wanted to just do a little bit of connector because, of course, as already was mentioned, we went to the Running Springs IB program exhibition. Trustee Yamazaki gave a great synopsis of what happened. And I just want to focus on one thing because IB is pretty important, as we heard from Sahar. The students matriculate from Running Springs to El Rancho and then to Canyon. But you have to hear some of these topics. I think that's the thing I really wanted to make sure I wrote down. One of the topics, zero hunger. Eradicate hunger. Good health and well-being. Gender equality. Clean water. No poverty. And also, clean energy. These are sixth graders having these conversations. I think that's critical to understand as we talk about all these remarkable things going on in our district. We've got students up, I'm going to say up on the hill. I don't know if that's the proper way to address it, but up on the hill who are really thinking about these things, stood in front of presentation boards, took time to have everyone in that group speak briefly about that topic, give solutions, and then thank us for being there. It was incredible. So I want to say a big thank you to Mr. T., Ms. Meehan, Ms. Wolf, and also Principal Yokoyama, who did a fantastic job with that. So that's it. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Forget...
Oh, the IB coordinator.
Yes, Randy Gower.
Randy Gower, that's right. See? See? Every time I mess up, it's up there. Okay, I missed somebody. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to all the trustees for supporting our programs and being out there. Like I said, I don't get to report on everything anymore, but I've enjoyed everything. That IB presentation is absolutely breathtaking. The manner in which they're able to speak on these subjects, too. They're so deep. They're understanding. And so I want to thank everybody for all the invites we get. They're plentiful. Next week, I will actually be out of town. There's a lot of things going on that I will unfortunately be missing out on, but I will miss you all. But I'm going to my daughter's, this point of personal preference, my daughter's law school graduation. And she is a former Vanguard. She's a former Santiago Santana. She went to Chapman Hills Elementary School, and I just, this ties into the teacher appreciation, I promise. Just the education that she had in Orange Unified was just beyond compare. It prepared her completely for college and law school and career. And her ability to think deeply and to be able to do those sorts of things. And I say that about my other daughter as well, who's obviously doing Seegerstrom-level productions. But truly, I mean, the education that they got here and got at El Medina High School and everything is beyond, and it really, truly did prepare them. And the teachers that they had inspired them, inspired them to do more. And so I just want to thank you again, small subset over here, but pass it on. We are very grateful for everything that you do. All right, well, I guess, meeting is adjourned at 9:25.